Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the August 20th, 2015, meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning Commission. We have a small group tonight, but we do have a quorum, so Heather, if you could please call and roll.
Sir, it's Noah. Here. Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here. Okay, for our audience, just a friendly reminder to silence cell phones if you have them on you. Before we get into the subject matter of tonight's work session, we'd like to extend the opportunity for anybody in the public that wishes to speak on any topic not related to the update of the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. Any takers? All right, well, we'll move into our meeting. We have meetings minutes to approve from the Planning Commission's June 11th and July 16th meetings. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Our motion is second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those minutes are approved. All right, tonight's a work session and a continuation of our July 16th meeting where we reached a consensus to direct staff to start the update of our comprehensive plan by focusing on the city's housing choices and affordability. Our goal for this evening is to discuss the staff's memorandum and listen to public comment, review the written comment, and make any changes or modifications that we think will be helpful in promoting housing choices and affordability within the comprehensive plan. We won't be making a formal recommendation tonight, but we will direct, help direct staff on those changes that we review. So, I think Chris, you're going to start the staff presentation and take it away.
All right, thank you, and good evening. So again, tonight, we are going to be looking at the all items, issues in the comp plan associated with housing affordability and housing choices. We're looking for a recommendation from Planning Commission to provide us feedback on potential changes to the affordable housing and housing choices, goals and policies for the comp plan update process. So, just want a reminder that this is at a very high level, just kind of looking at the themes in the comp plan, this one being the housing, all things related to housing and housing choice. Don't want to get too far into the details. We didn't provide data that goes really far into the details. We're just, again, trying to keep it at a high level. And with regard to that, some of the data that we have is largely from the consolidated plan. Plan was adopted in 2013. That data is from 2010 to 2012, but that's useful for us for basically framing the discussion So, tonight's objectives, we're going to be talking about what the state requirements are with updating the comprehensive plan related to housing, what the city's role is, providing data, also looking at the existing goals, goal and policy framework related to housing, and finally coming to recommendations. With regard to state requirements, according to the State Growth Management Act, the housing element of the comprehensive plan is intended to ensure the vitality and character of established residential neighborhoods, encourage the availability of affordable housing to all economic segments of the population, promote a variety of residential densities, and encourage preservation of existing housing stock. Basically requires that we inventory the housing units and analyze housing units' needs needed to accommodate growth. The existing plan meets this requirement, and the updated plan needs to include a new Also need to develop goals and policies and projections for preservation, improvement, and development of housing. So identification of sufficient land for housing. And the city has done a capacity analysis to support the mid-range population projection. Also, the state requires that we have provisions for existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of the community. As far as the city's role, to date, some of the city's responsibilities have included the following: providing adequate land supply to accommodate growth, offering incentives, providing infrastructure and services, provide an opportunity for a mix of housing types, and coordinate and support agencies that provide housing and services. Although the city doesn't provide or manage affordable housing, it does provide financial assistance to develop and operate housing. As far as current programs that the city is running, the city provides funding opportunities for rental housing development, homebuyer program, and housing preservation. It's largely funded through the housing levy and federal funds. The home program, it strives to sustain quality of life, provide affordable housing rehabilitation options to low and moderate income households, preserve existing housing, and provide employment opportunities for local contractors. The residences must be occupied by owner households with income at or below 80% of median income for Waukeun County. Since 1991, the city has helped fund 983 units of housing, 238 of which are the result of the 2012 home fund. Now, the consolidated plan outlines actions to be implemented to address housing needs. The consolidated plan is a requirement per HUD for receiving federal block grant funding. Now, the city set up a website online to solicit feedback from the community on issues related to Bellingham, to updating its comp plan, to help inform us of matters that are important to the community. Just as far as some of the questions and feedback we've received, one of the questions that was out there is how can we make single-family homes affordable to future generations? Couple of comments in response to that is, "The only way this will happen is if, is the only way this will happen is a substantial decline in inequality. That would require policy changes such as substantial, not marginal, increases in the minimum wage and the earned income credit, or a guaranteed annual income." Another comment related to that is, "I think that the focus on single-family homes as the choice for the future is both limiting and misguided. My partner and I are child-free by choice. The lack of affordable two-to-three-bedroom apartments and condos outside of the external entry college apartments means we end up looking at spaces that might be better suited for a family with children." Second question that was asked is, "Has housing costs increased region-wide? What alternatives to traditional single-family homes should be investigated?" Couple of responses to that that we received is, "Single-family homes are what the vast majority of us want, but they don't have to have Bellingham's traditional big yards, setbacks from the street, et cetera. We need flexibility from, we need flexibility for variety. Allow use of the infill toolkit in all residential zones. Encourage accessory dwelling units in all residential zones." Another comment was, "Establish community land trusts that would own the land, so the homes and improvements would be available for purchase by qualified applicants at a much lower cost that excludes the speculative value of the underlying land." With regard to the third question, "When is the, when is it appropriate for government to underwrite or reduce the cost of housing in Bellingham?" Couple of responses we had to that were, "It would never be appropriate for the City of Bellingham to use taxpayer funds to reduce the cost of housing. On the other hand, there are times when the City of Bellingham should consider providing housing assistance to long-term Bellingham residents." Another response was, "When it is difficult for first-time buyers or middle-income buyers to get a bank loan." So that's just a sampling of what we've received back. Excuse me while we try to find the screen here. Thank you, Heather. Is everybody okay with the middle one missing? So, concerning demographics, Bellingham combines the qualities of a large city, college town, and primary employment center into one metropolitan area. So, housing profile differs dramatically from the rest of Waukeun County, in large part due to the student population. These differences are important to understand as choices are made regarding future housing needs, particularly for low-income housing. Now, regarding seniors, our population is aging. From 2000 to 2010, the number of people in Bellingham between the ages of 60 and 64 years old increased 137%. And to put that in perspective, it went from 1,802 to 4,275. Those from 55 to 59 almost doubled, from 22418 to 4,783. So, this is the baby boomer generation, and gains in population will have a profound effect on the future housing and services needed in our community. We did provide a statistic study from AARP recently that found that 90% of seniors would prefer to basically age in place, age in the community that they have raised their family in, and stay in that area. The reality is, 90%, you're not going to achieve that number, 90%, due to various reasons, whether it be health, financial, just the need to downsize, do not need to maintain the large home that was originally built for a larger family, and also to move closer to services. Millennials is another one of the large demographic groups. It's a younger population, generally born between 1977 and 1985. They make up the, with that timeframe, they make up the tail end of Generation X and all of Generation Y. It's a very, very large group, larger than the baby boomers. These people are living at home longer, getting married later in life, and having fewer children. And where will they choose to live? Based on a number of surveys, we know they prefer in-city living, and they are not crazy about cars or long commutes. A 2011 survey of millennials found that 77% want to live in an urban area. A National Association of Realtors survey found that 62% of millennials say they want to live in a neighborhood with a mixture of houses and businesses near public transportation. They are big users of public transportation and are willing to pay more for the ability to walk or bike to jobs, shopping, and entertainment. They seek a low-maintenance lifestyle to spend more time on entertainment and social endeavors. They're attracted to smaller homes with higher-quality finishings, smaller yards or no yards. Small development and townhouses are a couple of housing types that they're very attracted to. And it's interesting to note that big businesses are now moving back to cities today from suburb campuses, suburban campuses, to be more competitive in attracting this young, educated, creative class. As far as diversity, the city is growing more diverse. We are still 86% white, but minority groups are increasing at significantly greater rates. The family makeup is changing. 70% of households consist of only one or two people. By 2025, it is estimated that 75 to 80% of households will have no children. Married households are now only 48% of the population, down from 83% in 1950. So marriage and children have been the driving force in suburban development for decades. The growing baby boomer and millennial populations and the trend towards smaller households are turning this on its head as the benefits of urban living become more mainstream. Let's take a look at some data here. Housing mix is one essential piece in how the city responds to demographic shifts. Current housing mix today, or in 2014, is 55.7% single-family, 44.3% multifamily. By 2036, we expect this to be 51.1% single-family and 48.9% multifamily. So this shift, again, is due in large part to smaller household size, seniors, and millennials. 46% of all renters and 31% of all owners earning less than 80% of area median income spend more than half their income on housing costs. At least 493 people in Waukeun County are homeless in 2012, as of 2012. More than half of Bellingham housing units are renter-occupied at 54%. Median rent increased 29% from 2000 to 2010, and our current vacancy rate has dropped from 5.4% to 2.9%. Single-family home values have increased 344% from 1989 to 2009. In 2007, the number of sales that were affordable to low-income family dropped to 40. So although median home sale prices have dropped since 2007, the gap between income and sales price remains high. In the past 10 years, median value of housing increased 96%, while the median family income Next, we'll look at existing goals and policies. So, this is what's in the comp plan right now. It's in, we basically combed through the comp plan through all the chapters and picked out everything related to housing. And again, they're in the staff report, so this is out of the housing chapter, land use chapter, transportation chapter. Basically, in summary, the goals and policies ask that we provide a healthy mix of housing sizes, types, and prices, increase housing opportunities for a broad range of income levels, create and maintain sound viable neighborhoods, revitalize neighborhoods that are declining, and increase wages and reduce housing costs. So, we've put together some recommendations based on what we have looked at, what we see maybe missing, or what needs to be consolidated. So again, low-income housing needs to be addressed, further updated. Also, needs to take a look at areas with high concentrations of, areas in the city with high concentrations of low-income housing. Take a look at unsheltered and homeless housing. Also, senior housing and services, in reference to lifecycle housing and aging in place. Also, the need for flexibility to address shrinking household size. Also need to address student housing and workforce housing. Now, in these recommendations, these include the Health Department's recommendations, and so recommend that provide links between housing and health, address the importance of transportation costs to afford housing affordability, basically the relationship of transportation cost to housing affordability, address partnerships for collaboration on redevelopment, and also policies for neighborhood continuity. That last one, neighborhood continuity, that basically involves ability for people to continue living in a neighborhood that they desire to live in, not have income or housing affordability effects play such a big role on where they live, so that as a person may be renting a house in a neighborhood, eventually they want to buy in that neighborhood, and that's the continuity, that they can continue to live where they desire to be or where they currently are. So, just back with the recommendations. Some of the changes that we look at, we're looking at doing is to remove outdated goals and policies, refine and consolidate redundant goals and policies, and also, one of the other recommendations is to address manufactured housing. So again, we are asking the Planning Commission to, you know, take a look at the existing goal and policy framework, identify what is missing, what needs to be refined, is there anything that staff has missed in our recommendations, or could they be refined? And basically go from there.
Is that the end of your presentation, Chris?
That is the end of my presentation, thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to have some public comment that we're going to take, but if anybody on the commission just had like a clarifying question that they wanted to ask, I think we could do that now, otherwise we could just take any comment. They have some questions, but we'll do it at our discussion, so, okay. You want to turn the lights back on then? Okay, so we'll take a public comment, testimony on this issue of housing affordability and choices. Does anybody else in the audience want to come down and speak on this issue? Sir, if you could just state your name and your address? Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Keep these comments really brief. My name is Dean Fearing. I'm the Executive Director at Colson Community Land Trust. We're a nonprofit organization that provides affordable homeownership here in Waukeun County. To date, we have 117 homes scattered throughout Waukeun County. We have served 158 families so far. That includes people who've decided to sell their home, often to go buy another market-rate home, so people use our program as a stepping stone to get into homeownership and then move into market-rate housing. I guess my only comments is to encourage all of you to look at what incentives the city can provide for affordable housing, and I think some of those key incentives are, you know, through funding, Colson receives funding from the City of Bellingham, and of course, the levy fund, and I would like to see maybe some additional funds put in place to help organizations like Colson and Habitat for Humanity do housing in neighborhoods that are trickier to do housing. So, I know the city wants to see more housing in neighborhoods with high rental concentrations. That's been something that was implemented with the housing levy funds this past round, but it's been exceptionally difficult to find houses in our buyer's price range in neighborhoods with rental concentrations. And so, in the past two years, we've passed on over 50 homes at a time when our waitlist is bigger than ever before. We have, on average, about 40 people attending our homebuyer education classes, so the need is there. People are wanting to buy houses, and I would love to see some creative incentives to offer more homeownership throughout the city. And then, of course, the other piece is to take away some of those barriers to homeownership. I know that it's been discussed having a requirement that homes be within a quarter-mile of a transit stop. We just built three beautiful homes in the Birchwood neighborhood that aren't not within a quarter-mile of a transit stop, so if that rule were in place, those homes wouldn't exist. They're close to Bellingham Technical College, they're close to jobs and schools. There used to be a bus route close by, but that bus route changed when WTA had to cut some routes, and so, to me, those barriers really limit our ability and our homebuyer's ability to buy homes in the city, and so, removing some of those barriers and then creating additional incentives, maybe through additional funding, would be a great way to bring in more homeownership to people, working families that want to stay close to their jobs and schools, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Not to put you on the spot, but you have a unique experience, having done this kind of development, just for us on the commission that don't. Do you have any specific incentives or barriers that could be addressed throughout this plan update?
Well, again, coming back to the quarter-mile barrier, we have a project up on Telegraph Road that is not within a quarter-mile of a bus stop, so if that rule stays in place, we're, you know, there's 23 to 30 homes that we wouldn't be able to build, or we wouldn't be able to bring city funding to help us build that project. We got that land for $15,000 per lot. It's a struggle to find affordable land to build on in Bellingham, and so, it was a unique opportunity that came to us, and we had to act on it and purchase it. We used grant funding from the federal government to purchase that land, and again, we'll partner with Habitat to be the builder to build on that. So, having a quarter-mile rule in place would essentially shut that project down. If that were a half a mile or something a little more flexible, that would allow that project to happen. I think the city is already interested in removing the 60% rental concentration requirement, and so that requires that homes coming into the trust be in a neighborhood with a rental concentration of 60% or greater. Most of Bellingham, as the data shows, is around 54%. So having that barrier taken away, again, would have allowed us to probably have 15 more homes in the trust than we currently do, just because of that, it was such a challenge to do that. And so, I think if there are incentives that offered some additional funding to do houses in neighborhoods with high rental concentrations, that would help a program like ours succeed in those neighborhoods.
That's great.
So.
Thank you. That's great, thanks.
Great, thanks.
Hello, my name's Clayton Petrie. I live in Bellingham, actually near to those homes he was talking about. I wanted to use one of Dean's things that he just told you. It's really difficult to find affordable land to build on in Bellingham, and, you know, just think about that while you're going through this process, when you have probably the premier affordable housing unit around telling you that. So, one of the things that, in the staff report, that was difficult for me to use was the various timeframes. I gave you a couple pages that kind of lists out the different timeframes, and, you know, it'd be nice if you could get a snapshot in time and, you know, compare things on the same timeframes. It would be very helpful for the general public. And the other thing is, there's a bunch of different areas, I believe, used. One example that I wasn't sure of is it talked about the metropolitan area. Well, is that the census metropolitan statistical area, you know, which is a county-wide area, or is it Spellingham City Limits, or what is that? So it'd be nice if there was a label as to what area was being talked about with each different sort of data point. Then, one other thing I wanted you guys to think about is, you know, we have, I mentioned this before, but we have a really small vacancy number right now in apartments, well, for everything, but especially apartments, and one of the things that hasn't been taken into account, as far as I can tell, is how many apartments do you need to get back to a healthy vacancy rate, or simply the vacancy rate that's used in the land capacity analysis? Or simply the vacancy rate that's used in the land capacity analysis? Those are units that need to be built, you know, yesterday for the people that are already here or looking for a place now. You know, they're here and looking, and they're not there. And what do you expect the vacancy rate to be in 20 years? Or what do you hope it to be? You know, that should be the number you use. And you need to figure out how many of those units need to be built to get to that before you even accommodate the expected expansion of people. The other thing I wanted to mention is that they've been talking about the shrinking household size. You should try and do your best to figure out what you think that household size might be in 20 years and use that in your land capacity numbers. Because if you think you're going to go from one and a half people to one and a quarter people or one person per, you know, apartment, that's a big deal. It really changes all the numbers. And I did mention this before, this is the kind of analysis that should have been done during the UGA boundary discussion. But you can still do it now and change or update the information as best as possible. I think that's one of the biggest problems with the current LCA and our current approach to this is the shrinking household size over time and what do you think it's going to be? The last thing is that, you know, the current plan, between 500 and 600 of our most affordable units are planned to be demolished and built as a different kind of housing unit. You know, how many of those units have taken money from the city through its various programs and aren't available to be demolished and built at a higher density? I think that's a problem or a data point that you guys should look at. And especially if you're trying to decide how many housing units you need for the, you know, all economic segments of our population. So anyways, I don't want to take too much time, but those are some of the things that I found important and what I think's missing out of your current analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Twichell?
Hi, Linda Twichell with the Building Industry Association. I'm not going to repeat anything in the long, long letter we sent you. You're safe. If you have questions, let me know. I would like to, one of the things that struck me during the presentation was when we look at the recommendations on groups that need help, it's virtually everybody who is not upper-level income. To me, this says we need to look and see if there are any general market things we can do to make housing in general easier, more affordable. I mentioned that in the letter, but I am still urging the city to consider. The building permit situation has gotten much better over the last couple of years. The land use permitting end of things still tends to be hard to get through, expensive, a long time, et cetera. The recent estimate I heard was that when you're planning something as big as a subdivision, it takes eight to 10 years to get the thing going, between the time you start and the time people can actually build the houses. So, anything we can do, and this may even come in next week with the critical areas ordinance considerations, if there's anything you can do that makes sense, that's still going to protect the environment, but would not put unnecessary additional costs on housing, please take a look at that. That's going to be an important thing. Other than that, land supply remains a concern for our people because the remaining lots are difficult and expensive to build on. And we remain concerned that because of the emphasis on multifamily housing, which most of these groups tell us they don't really want, that people are going to take the available option of moving to Ferndale, Linden, et cetera. So, you've heard all that before. Unless there are any questions, I'll wrap it up there. Be good.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, anybody else wish to speak on tonight's topic, housing affordability and options in City of Bellingham? Sir, come on down. Just state your name and for the record, please, thank you.
Will do. I apologize for getting here late and not putting my name on the list. My name's Tim Hostetler. I live in the Seehome neighborhood. And I'm on the Seehome neighborhood board, have been for a while, although I have not been following this issue as closely as others on the board. Three things, I'll be very brief. One is that there are obviously three specific areas you can look at for future housing, and you're going to have to meet the numbers that you come up with on projections. Urban growth area, the urban village, and then the single-family neighborhoods or neighborhoods in general. Certainly hope that you look at the urban villages first and foremost, and that the public investments should be looking at going there and plan going there, rather than shooting it off into the UGA land. I know in some cases, that's appropriate, but at least look first at the urban village. As far as a single-family residence area, I hope you're very aware, and I'm sure staff is, that the City of Seattle has done a 360 in about the last 10 days on that issue. I hope you watch very closely on what you might be proposing for single-family zoning and changes to that. In particular, the ADUs. Question that I would pose to the staff, do you have an inventory of ADUs in Seehome? I don't think they do. That's something you have to look at and then tailor your regulations to that. And that's where the neighborhood should have a voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, that's a good comment. Thank you, everybody. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, so we'll move into our discussion. For staff, there was a couple of questions that were raised during the public testimonies. One was just the definition of the metropolitan area in the data sampling. Chris, that might be something that falls into your area. Do you guys have a definition of how that was defined?
First, where is that particular statement, reference?
What page were you looking at there?
Yeah, we'll move on past that. The site would just, inventory on ADUs, I know that's not the topic of tonight's issue, but when we move into that, that might be something to, when we move into the ADU ordinance, that might be something to keep in mind that.
Yes.
Okay, questions? Discussion? I have a question to start out, just general process. It looks like we've done a pretty good job identifying some of the changing demographics and housing preferences, you know, in our community that, you know, since our last update. I see that, you know, the staff has identified some recommendations. They seem to be pretty vague. At what point are we going to actually start to see some red line, you know, changes or additions to the comprehensive plan?
Good evening, everyone. Way that we've laid this out is that we will go through these significant issue tracks that we've identified, this one and urban villages and the other ones. And then we'll go away and do our work and bring back to you probably in December or January, actually, actual red lines of the various chapters so that you can see what we're proposing be changed.
Thanks.
And one more thing, Garrett, before I leave you. Tendatively, we have the ADU ordinance coming back to the planning commission in October.
Oh, great, great. Steve?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions here. First of all, there was a comment about the transportation, the transportation lengths have to be so much, what is a quarter-mile close to get some of these housing benefits? It was mentioned by this commission also, we wanted to extend it to about a half a mile. It was stated that those restrictions are state rules, and I don't believe we really have the wherewithal to change that separation or that inclusion area from a quarter-mile to a half-mile. Is that correct?
This is David Stahlheim, City Block Grant Manager. And no, I think when we came and talked to you guys about that on another ordinance and incentive ordinance, a different one, I think at the time, I was under the impression that the ADA required paratransit access within a quarter-mile. That is not true. It is a half-mile standard. So if you live within a half-mile of a fixed transit route, then you get paratransit services. If you're beyond that, then you have no access to paratransit. Or am I seeing that opposite? No, I'm saying that right. Transit is required within a half-mile. Originally, I told you a year ago or whenever it was I was here my last time here, it was a quarter-mile, and that's an error. The rule with respect to this is not in any city ordinance or city plans. This is within the housing levy plans that were adopted by the city council. So it's not anything in your wheelhouse at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask a question to staff. We received some written comments, one from the Building Industry Association of Waukesha County, the County Association of Realtors, and of course, the Petries submitted tonight and had submitted earlier, specific questions and comments in regards to the staff study. How do you or are you going to address those comments specifically listed in those three
I think it depends on how you want to work your way through this. If you want to come back and have another session, we could respond at that time. We just got these this afternoon, just like you did. So, we could either do that at a follow-up work session or when we bring the chapter back to you later this year, we could respond to them at that time. I just, part of the comments had to do with data, and we recognize that all of the data needs to be updated and that the chapter will include the most up-to-date data that we can come up with. So, I just wanted to make that clear. But yeah, we can come back. When we bring you back the housing chapter, we can talk about the issues that are raised in these letters at that time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would like to see you come back, and I'd like to see, a lot of these questions are specific and they are detailed, and I think they are very informative, and I'd like to hear your comment in response to them. Next question. In your recommendations, you say one of the goals is to provide a healthy mix of housing size, types, and prices. All we've heard so far is low housing. My question to you is, what is a healthy mix that you are shooting for in these different classifications?
I can start, and maybe other staff can chime in. That's a policy statement that's in our existing plan. I believe it's in our existing plan. It's not defined, Steve, so there's not a certain percentage that we would say needs to be in different income categories. So it's not defined. Perhaps it could be, and perhaps there could be targets established in the updated plan.
I think so far, we've heard just of one case for low housing. That's all we ever hear about. Affordable housing, low housing. We never hear about where's that median? The median's going up and it's getting harder and harder for that medium-income, two-family wage earners to try to get something these days. And it's going to get worse. Still, we don't hear about that.
Yeah. Well, and that's why in our recommendations, we've included workforce housing as one of the issues that needs to be addressed. And that's the middle-income section of the market.
Okay, another question, and you specifically called out Western Washington University to help add housing. I would think you'd want to also include the community college. They're growing out there every time you turn around. They supply zero housing right now. They have some properties that, along the Cordada Parkway, that are eventually targeted for student housing. And I think anything we could do to help assist to get to that goal, for them to provide housing. So we're not in this situation where we got these kids running around, living four, five, eight to a one-bedroom house, which is very common. It's all over the place. That would really assist this situation we're in right now.
Yeah, we could broaden the policy direction to include student housing, not specifically Western, but student housing in general.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Jeff, I think, sorry, we'll get to it.
Well, I'm struggling how to make this succinct, but I guess what I'd probably like to start with is coming full circle on the land supply and the UGA and population forecast discussion that we spent a lot of our time on. And that did not appear to be reflected much in what ended up being the staff recommendation or what the council went with. But, that said, one of the things we talked about at the time was what's the impact of land supply and lot supply on housing affordability? And what is, I guess, staff at one point had said that they felt that the mid-range population could be accommodated by, without adding any additional UGAs and without adding significant infill. And yet, here we are, I guess, trying to identify or trying to figure out what structural issues are driving up costs and are affecting costs here? You know, is it lot cost? What's the issue of supply and increased supply on lot cost? And how much of a barrier is that? What are permitting costs compared to other communities? What's the implication on housing affordability for that? So I guess, you know, I'm a little disappointed in how the framing of this is going forward because what would make sense to me is to look at the different housing sectors or the types of people looking for houses, and, you know, including higher-end houses for that matter, workforce housing, people that technically fall into the affordable housing gap, people that are millennials looking for smaller houses. But all these different housing components, looking at the barriers for each of those housing components, looking at what is affecting affordability and supply and what structural issues can be addressed in the comp plan. And I'm a little bit concerned because when I went to the recommendations, it looked like the first five recommendations were all essentially taxpayer-funded attempts to provide incentives or programs to try to counter what may be structural problems that weren't identified. So I guess, I realize this is more of an opinion than a question, but there is a question, and that is, how can we untangle this ball and start to identify structural issues that we can do with the comp plan that are affecting housing affordability? And that's broad-based housing affordability in the community and supply in the community. And is there a way that our time can be used effectively to go through these? Because when I look through all these different goals and policies, it's really a dog's breakfast. And there's some serious pruning that's needed, and they conflict, and they don't really address a lot of these things. So, it's an open question. I just, before we get into specifics, it would be really nice to talk about how we're going to try to achieve something here.
So, yeah, I think IDing the structural issues is a really good point, and we can spend some time talking about that. And looking at the various sectors and the barriers, that's something that we do plan to do. I want to address one thing you said, Jeff, when you said that staff indicated that we could accommodate the mid-range population growth forecast without significant infill. That's actually not what we said. What we said was we can accommodate the mid-range forecast without significant changes in zoning. We have a fair amount of capacity. The way the land capacity analysis came out, most of the growth, whatever number you pick, is going to be accommodated in city neighborhoods, almost 18,000 people. Urban village is about 12,000, and then only about 3,000 in the UGAs. So primarily, the growth is going to occur in city neighborhoods. It's just that with the mid-range population growth forecast, significant upzones aren't required. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to be looking for areas where we might get some additional capacity. ADUs is one of those, although I think that's probably a small piece of the puzzle. The subdivision ordinance update is probably going to be an area where we might get some more efficiencies rather than the ADU ordinance. And I also wanted to say that regarding your recommendations on the population growth forecast and the land supply, council hasn't made a decision. The planning committee has made a preliminary recommendation. recommendation. The full council hasn't even really had an opportunity to talk about it yet. So we don't know what the final result is going to be. I think that when you talk about the difference between the mid-range forecast and the high-range forecast, which the commission recommended, it's about 7,000 people, a little over 7,000 people over 23 years. So it's, it's, it's more, but it's, in the big picture, I'm not sure how, how really significant that is. What the council, or at least the planning committee, made clear is, and this was different than what the commission recommended, was they want to make sure that, or they indicated that they want to make sure that there's a plan in place to serve the areas before they're put into the UGA. And what the commission recommended was that they would be put in the UGA now, and we work on the plan to serve the areas. So I'm not sure that there's a significant difference of opinion between the two groups about where, when we need additional land, where we should go. It's, it's a timing issue. And everyone recognized that we don't have a plan to serve those areas with the full range of urban services now. And council's opinion, at least the planning committee's opinion, was that we need to have that plan in place before we put the areas into the UGA, or before the county does. So that's the difference. It's a subtle difference. It's not as maybe dramatic as what you may have heard, or what it initially sounds like. Again, the population growth forecast, the difference between the mid and the high is not that great in the big picture, and we'll be updating those numbers before we ever get to the second decade of the, of the growth forecast. And again, the UGA changes were more of a timing issue than they were a difference in philosophy, I think. So anyway, Jeff, I hope that helps. At least at this point, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, just to follow up on that, I guess that what I'm trying to dial in on is the impact of lot supply on housing affordability. And yes, I know from a planning perspective that there's an overhang of lots in the city of Bellingham, but then I also hear from the development community in the letter that many of those lots are not necessarily economically feasible to develop. And so what's the truth? Or where, where is the actual answer to why are these apparently, all these lots? There's an extraordinarily strong demand for housing. There's an extremely low vacancy rate in multifamily. There are very low interest rates, and the building's not happening. What is the answer? And I guess that's what I'm trying to get into, because to me, these are fundamental structural issues that I'd really like to know why, before we start to really try to talk about policies, or further incentives, or further subsidies. And that lot supply seems like a pretty key issue to me. And that's, anyway, I'll leave it at that. Thanks for your answer.
Sure.
Cerise? I, you know, I appreciate that comment of Jeff's. I, that's a, you know, kind of a concern that we see in a lot of comment that we receive, too, is are we using data, you know, to drive the action of our policies and our regulations? And I think that's kind of what, you know, we're trying to talk about. As we're looking at updating the comprehensive plan, or can we add policies that compel using data to actually drive regulations and land use, you know, regu, you know, policies? And I think right now, you know, the data's always behind. And so what we could maybe be effective doing this evening is adding, you know, goals within the comprehensive plan policies that state, you know, these should be data-driven, these should be analyzed on a, you know, annual basis, or, you know, semi-annual basis. So, and that's going to require staff resources. So that kind of gets into my, one of my questions is, we're talking about housing choices, creative housing forms, infill development, subdivision, you know, changes that are going to require review. Right now, Chris, I believe you're the only one that does infill toolkit, right?
I am basically considered the staff go-to person for that, yes.
So then, from your perspective, you know, are staff resources adequate to handle, you know, the changing, you know, applications and permits that you're seeing come through? If that's a push, if you're pushing for, you know, infill development, is the staff resources even adequate to handle that?
You know, we, we have a lot of work coming our way right now. And infill toolkit is, is just one of many things. I think that all of staff are, they've got their plates full. And so it's a matter of finding time to do the cross-training between staff, so that other staff are brought up to speed on what, what is involved with the infill toolkit, how, how it's accomplished. Also, it's an education process for the community, for the development community. There's many developers out there that aren't aware of the infill toolkit, or if they're aware of it, they, they don't truly know what the benefits are. And so, you know, there's, there's that public education element that's very important. We've got a development community for the last couple of decades that have been building single-family detached and multifamily apartments, and nothing in between. So now we finally have this tool where you can build on smaller lots, smaller homes. And there, there isn't many developers doing it. We fortunately are seeing a fair amount of interest within the last year, and activity where people are applying for projects under the infill toolkit. But we, there's just a lot of opportunities out there where, you know, I see a project coming in on a multifamily piece of property, doing large lot, single-family, that could be doing twice as many detached, single-family, small, you know, infill toolkit homes. But I just, I don't think that they are aware of the infill toolkit, or just, it's, you have builders that have built something for the last 20 years. That's the one thing they know, that's, they don't want to vary from what they know. They don't want to break outside of their shell. So, you know, perhaps it's a new generation of builders that will be picking this up.
Well, so it's, I mean, it sounds like there's barriers, and some of the written comment is talking about timeframes of, you know, whether people are applying for a subdivision or a, an infill project, that the, the timing of that is a, is a barrier to, you know, to getting the project done. So, I mean, as we look at policy, policies and goals, you know, maybe, you know, one should be evaluating staff resources as these changing housing forms come in for, you know, application. Because, I mean, really, what we're trying to do, you know, this evening is give some direction as, as you guys go through and find housing affordability within all these different chapters. Maybe we could add some language that can, you know, guide us in actually being effective, and, you know, make us some change. So these are good comments. Jeff?
So one of the ways to look at sort of what I'm asking, or what was in my last comment, was, you know, I could see having ideological discussion, or a discussion about what's politically feasible, or kind of our individual preferences. And I, I'm just, I'm a voice for trying to have, exactly what you said, have a more of a data-driven, real analytical assessment of, of what the failures are in our current market for different segments, and what we can do to actually fix that in a way that works for the entire community and enhances the community. Because otherwise, as I said, it really is a dog's breakfast. And you start coming, having these policies of, you know, the obvious thing is, is vague language about preserving neighborhood integrity, and then vague language about increasing infill. Obviously, that's a prime example. And really, you have conflicting things in the comp plan, and there's no guidepost to try to figure out, well, how are we actually going to solve these problems? And so, you know, I would really like to work on solving the problem. And if there's a way to do that, that's how I'd like to spend my time. Because I have lots of opinions about ideology, but I don't think you guys want to hear that. So there you go.
Well, I think, you know, at our last work session, we looked at, you know, all the, all the chapters of the comprehensive plan. And we identified this as being our starting point. So this was identified as being one of the most important issues, where we could try to increase emphasis on creating different housing opportunities and affordability. So Greg, there's some themes that have been hit on here. I'm wondering if you could help give us a little direction on how we could take some of these themes and implement them, you know, or provide direction to you to use those as a tool to implement them into the, you know, the updating and the redrafting. When I say redrafting, not rewriting the comprehensive plan, but the tweaking of the plan to kind of hit on some of these themes.
I think just doing what, what you're doing, and identifying issues for us and gaps where you think the current goal and policy base isn't adequate to, or is conflicting. You know, we've identified some of those things. If you want to add things to the list, that, that would be appropriate. One thing I wanted to mention before I forget, I know there is a sense that supply isn't, isn't keeping up with demand, and I think that's borne out by the numbers. I would point out that, you know, in the last two years, 2013 and 2014, we've issued permits for 850 multifamily units and about 300 single-family units. So there are, there is some housing getting built out there. It's, it's, again, supply catching up with demand. There are some big projects in the pipeline as well. And I would also point out that we have, since 2006, when our comp plan was adopted, we've annexed over 1,300 acres of our UGA. And all of that, 1,300 acres, is zoned for residential development, and much of it is undeveloped. And so, or is now be, starting to be developed. So that's another indication, I think, that supply is at least, that the supply is starting to increase, that we, the market is, is, is going to be catching up with the demand, or at least getting closer to meeting the demand. Hopefully, that will slow the increase in prices, and maybe bring the vacancy rate, you know, address the vacancy rate issue as well. That's 1,300 acres of land that's, you know, it's got to be subdivided, it's got to have utilities extended to it. It doesn't happen overnight. But some of the areas, like King Mountain, were annexed, I think about five years ago now. And we're just starting to see development in that area. So from a supply perspective, I think we've done what we can with annexing UGA areas. Most of the residential land that's left in our UGA, and I think we talked about this recently, is mostly developed. We're talking about the Geneva neighborhood, and Tweed 20, Northern Heights, Hillsdale, the Alderwood neighborhood. Those are all neighborhoods that are in our UGA, but have very little development capacity. So I think we've done a good job of getting those areas that actually had a fair, a significant amount of development capacity annexed to the city, and we're now finally starting to see development in those areas as well.
Well, I think, I mean, for, for myself, I think that was part of the, you know, frustration that Jeff hit on, is that we had a pretty substantial conversation over a period of several months about housing supply, housing demand, housing forms. And the, you know, subcommittee meeting was, was very short and brief at the council, and didn't really get into the discussion of, you know, how are we going to grow? And that's, you know, what we hope is talked about. You know, you're talking about meeting demand, but we need, you know, we need housing units, and we need to talk about whether we're growing out, or whether we're growing in. And if we're growing in, then as we go through subdivision ordinance, ADU ordinance, infill, we need to look at increasing, you know, capacity. And we would like to, I personally would just like to see that conversation had, and make sure that there's some substantive, you know, debate of that topic. So whether that happens or not, you know, would be good. If, Cerise, did you have any thoughts that you wanted to share?
Well, I appreciate the conversation that we've, we're having, and I agree with what I'm hearing. And I also appreciate the idea of educating the public, because I have heard that for years, that the, people don't really know what the infill toolkit is, and how to use it. And so I like the idea of however we can educate the public more about that, so we can really utilize the tools that we do have. I do understand that that would take more staff time, and so that's, you know, I can appreciate that that's something we have to factor in also. Also, you know, I'd be curious about what other incentives there are, you know. I think incentives go a long way for people, and help, and, you know, how do we get people to participate in growing in a healthy way that, that works for people? So, you know, and then obviously, breaking down these boundaries or barriers of timing, you know, if projects take seven to eight years to do, you know, it's a pretty big, you know, time is money. So if people can't, you know, actually get anywhere within, you know, seven to eight years, that's a pretty big deal. So I guess, looking at ways to solve problems, I'm on the same page. I, you know, I don't really have any interest in debating things one way or another. I just want to get, solve problems, and how do we get there? So I'm interested in that conversation, I guess. So that's some of my thoughts right now.
Thank you, thank you. And we can spend some time talking about the incentives that we do have now.
I think that would be.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know that we're necessarily prepared to do that tonight, but we can do that when we come back to you. We do have, you know, the multifamily tax exemption program that provides an incentive for folks. We have some incentives built into our, some of our urban village plans for affordable housing, and all of the programs that, that Dave runs. But we can have a more robust discussion about whether or not those incentives are enough, whether they're the right ones. And we could, it could be as simple as, you know, adding policy statements that, that directs us to, to look at our incentive program, you know, from time to time, to make sure that it's, it's working, that people are utilizing it. And if not, what do we need to do to change it? Jeff?
That sounds like a great idea to me. And I guess the thing I would ask, if you're going to bring that back, is, you know, I know you're doing the QAQC approach to your Kaizen, or whatever it is. But if, if when you present those incentive programs, you can give us some idea of backwards-looking efficacy of it, you know, have they worked? Have they worked the way you thought they were going to work? Are they just incentivizing something that would have happened anyway? You know, are there, are there reverse thing, you know, unintended consequences that have actually, like in one of the letters we got, the, the point was made of, of having low-income set-asides, or, or affordable set-asides actually increase the cost of the other market rate, you know? Are there unintended things happening in center programs? So I would just ask, if you, if you do that, give us the full scoop on all that, because I'd be very interested in, in the role incentives might have in our future discussion.
Maybe to piggyback on that, too, to find partnerships. I mean, we have in our audience, you know, in a small audience, we have a handful of people that are doing housing in our community. So if we could work together, you know, and use that part, those partnerships we have to educate the public, that might be a real natural fit. At least that's what, it seems to me, there's a real natural relationship that is already in place, that we can utilize.
If it's good with the rest of the commission, I think I'd like to try to hit on what I'm seeing as kind of five points from tonight's discussion. And if anybody wants to jump in or interject, or make any changes, but maybe Heather can take note of this in the minutes. There's, the first, the first one would be, this is kind of Cerise, and what we're hearing from Colson Land Trust, is a policy statement to collaborate with nonprofit and for-profit developers to identify barriers, and identify potential incentives to increasing housing affordability and choices. So a policy statement for staff to meet and interact with for-profit and not-for-profit developers, to, to do that on whatever is appropriate basis, you know, whether it's annually or semi-annually, but to have some policy statement there. So that, that'd be one. Two, I think Jeff kind of hit on this, and if I speak out on this, and you want to correct me, then feel free. But adding policy statement to use data, to collect and use data to drive, you know, about land supply, and, you know, availability, demand, prices, to, to create, you know, actionable land use policies and regulations.
The one addition I'd make to that is, I, my hope was that that was going to be our approach to the comp plan, not just a policy in the comp plan.
As we look at these chapters, when they bring them back.
You can do both. You can have it be an ongoing thing in the future, but I also am hoping that that's how we work this out.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Third was, one of, one of Steve's, you know, comments, I think is really good, on, on Third was, one of, one of Steve's, you know, comments, I think is really good on, on looking at student housing, we should really be looking beyond just Western and, and broadening student housing to, you know, Vauquen Community College. I think there's like 7,000 students up there now and this is pretty significant. And, and we, you know, if we're going to be collaborating with universities, we should definitely be collaborating with the community college and maybe even the technical college because if you go through the Birchwood neighborhood, you see signs, no, no parking signs everywhere because there, there's an issue there. So, I think that would be good to, as a third. One, one for, for me is a policy statement to review staff resources as housing and permit applications change. If we're promoting, you know, a new subdivision ordinance or an ADU ordinance, or the use of the infill toolkit, we have to have adequate staff resources to handle those applications. It sounds like right now, we're limited. So, if we're wanting to try to meet that demand, if we expect that to be a housing trend that's going to change, I would think that we need to have adequate staff resources. So, that needs to be reviewed. So, I don't know if that's four or five, but I think that sort of summarizes some of the themes that I think we heard tonight. That's four. Four's good.
Dig deeper now.
Yeah. So, does, is that provide some direction and can you tell us, like, so how are we going to do this when you come back? You, so you're saying later, you're going to, we're going to actually bring the revisions to, with this focus to the comp plan and we're going to, we're going to integrate these four themes that we talked about tonight?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll take these suggestions and, and review them and turn them into policy statements that you can review along with the other issues that we've identified. Yeah, so we'll come back with all of the changes to the chapter, a review of the comments that we got, suggested changes to the goals and policies that came from staff and from the commission and from any of the testimony that we've gotten. And we'll review those all together at that time.
Jeff, Steve, Jeff then Steve?
I don't know if it's useful, but one of the things I started thinking about when I was reading through all these, the existing plan elements was, at some level, I was trying to assemble in my head a table that had the existing language, whether it was implemented or not, what the barriers were, whether it should be changed, and whether it conflicted with any other statement, you know? And trying to analytically put it together so that it would, you know, it'd start to float up to the top so you could start to redline out the ones that are, are clearly not an issue and for the ones that sound good but weren't actually implemented, you can dial in on those. And for the ones that conflict, you identify the conflict and figure out what you want to do about it. And I don't want to create busy work, but that's almost what I was, when I was reading through these, I was almost at the point in wanting to do that myself just because it was just so difficult to reconcile all of those. So, I don't know if you're, if you're focused primarily on keeping your existing language because I've heard that you're, you're, you feel comfortable with a lot of the elements of your existing plan. So, if you are looking at keeping a lot of that language, it seems to me like it'd be pretty important to do something like that as an exercise to figure out what belongs in there and what doesn't. But you can do what you will with that suggestion.
Well, I think that's a good suggestion. We're not, we're not locked into any particular format for bringing the work back to you. So, that may be the most efficient way to do it.
Yeah. I ran into some of that, you know, as well, just looking at some of the existing goals and saying, it's a good goal. Has it, has it been implemented, you know, and maybe it's partially implemented, you know? I got one right here, Bellhams Regulations Encourage and Provide Incentives for Innovative Housing and Mixure of Housing Types, you know? And so, you look at the infill toolkit and that definitely was a step in that right direction, but then it was limited to multifamily zones. So, it was like sort of, you know, at least in my opinion, a bit of a half measure, you know? So, maybe, you know, I was.
So, the goal was good. The implementation wasn't what?
What it could be.
What it could be.
Maybe stronger language to promote the implementation because the goals, it's sort of like things work in a, you know, a delay, right? There's always that natural, natural inertia to a new idea or a new form. And that's what we're seeing is this was 2006, so those ideas were, you know, germinating. And as they're kind of coming to fruition, we probably need to go through and add stronger language to say, yeah, we, we started this, let's finish it. So, we could do that, you know, as well. Steve, you had a?
Yeah, just a, a follow-up to a comment I made about the written letters that came in. Looking back, I believe it was the critical area ordinance, area ordinances that we discussed a few months ago, there was an extremely good and professional letter sent in by Mr. Jeff Medow. And he had some great points in it. And I had made the, basically the same suggestion. And I believe Mr. Sundin met with him and the two of them discussed the letter and they came to an agreement on certain things that should be looked at and shouldn't be looked at. I saw Mr. Medow after he met with him and he said he was more than happy at the results of such a meeting. And just carrying on, I, I'm not trying to create work, work, additional work, but perhaps something like that with the authors of these letters, and I see Ms. Twitchell out here tonight, something like that would, I think would be very helpful. It wouldn't prolong another discussion, but it would get one-on-one with somebody that has absolutely in-depth knowledge about the problems that they're commenting on. So, that's, that's my point and that's, I'd like to see something like, like that transpire.
That's good. So, as we move forward, is there any, any other comment or discussion on this? I think our next, you know, work session is not the 27th, but the following meeting is going to be on the urban village implementation. That was sort of the second focus area that we.
Yeah, and we've, we've talked about throwing in perhaps healthy community in with that topic as well. We talked about that being sort of an overarching theme, a healthy community. And so, we will probably add that to the agenda as well, and then we'll need to talk about what comes next. And I wanted to point out that you've got an August 27th public hearing on the CA, on the critical areas ordinance. That'll be your, your next meeting. And then, as I mentioned, September 17th is the next work session on the comp plan. And then, October 1st is when we tentatively have scheduled bringing back the ADU ordinance for you. And then, Lisa just reminded me that we've got an open house scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00 on September 15th in Old City Hall to talk about these major themes that we've all identified, including this one. So, that'll be another chance for the public to find out what's going on, to talk with staff about these issues.
What, what date was that?
It was September 15th, Tuesday.
That's two days before our work session on urban villages.
Correct.
So, is the goal maybe at that open house to identify some, some of the community's interest in our, our next, you know, topic for the update? Because it seems like right now, we kind of have, we have two. The one we're working on here now, urban villages. So, at that next, on the 17th, we're going to try to identify with that information that you get at the open house, we'll try to identify the next topic or two.
Yep.
Okay. That'd be great.
So, on the open house, oops, excuse me. How are we going to get the word out to the public to, to get participation? I'm assuming probably a few different ways, but I'm just kind of curious so I can help promote it too.
Yes, we'll probably do what we did last time with the March open house. We'll send invitations out to all the neighborhood associations and have them included in their newsletters, on their websites, through their email lists. I have a comp plan email list myself that includes like 700, 800 people. I'll make sure to send it out to them and they already have a save the date. And then, of course, we forward it to other groups and say, like Sustainable Connections, like please forward to your members. So, we do sort of a broad sweep across the community. We'll also have postcards and flyers that we'll post throughout the community. So, we'll bring those. I don't know if you have a meeting before the open house later in August? We can bring some postcards to have you guys help with that.
Great.
Absolutely. I mean, yes. I know that the BIAW and all those groups are on the comp plan email list. And so, when we forward the invitation to all of those folks, we'll ask them to forward it on to their, their respective organizations.
Their constituents, okay, very good. Okay, Jeff?
When do you anticipate bringing back the issue that we were talking about tonight for further discussion? Understanding that this is just like the first bite at it and we haven't really discussed anything in depth. When does that actually happen?
Our, our thought was that we, the next time we talk about this, we actually have some redline, a redline version of the chapter just for you to look at and sort of get started with discussing these issues. So, we would, we would bring back, as I said, our, our review of the chapter, the issues that we've identified and the potential changes that we would recommend. We'll address the issues that you raised tonight and then go through the public comment and actually look, you'd be able to look at the chapter and see what's, what's included, what's proposed to be changed, what you think might be missing.
Well, I don't want to be contrarian, but it seems like we haven't really had a discussion yet at the policy level of where we think the strengths are and weaknesses and what good programs would be. And we haven't seen the data that we just talked about, about, you know, what are the barriers, what are the gaps, what do we want to do about them? And it seems like there's an intermediate step that's missing because by the time we get underlying strikeout text, it's kind of a, perceived by the public at least, and sometimes us, as a done deal. So, I definitely think there's more conversation that we could have maybe with a fuller commission meeting where we can actually really get into the whole housing supply issue. I don't know what you guys feel about that, but it seems a little premature to me to move that fast on that topic.
My, I, I mean, I guess my thought would be, as, as, going to the first question, Greg, as you guys work through this, I mean, you talk about redline changes and some of the, for, for housing affordability and choices. You're, you think in November, December, that we would be looking at that?
Yes.
Does it make?
If you want to have another meeting to continue this discussion, when we have a full group, we can schedule that.
Well, yeah, I'm wondering if on our next, you know, if we can incorporate, you know, because if we're taking sort of the broad strokes at urban villages, like if we keep the same format that we did tonight, maybe we could have, you know, at our next, during that meeting, have a little more substantial conversation about this topic before we see, you know, the redline, you know, changes. I think we would have time to do that. I'd certainly be fine with that. So, that's, what, what meeting is that? That's October?
Well, I think, I think, Garrett, what, what we'd like to do is take a look at the schedule. It doesn't, we're going to need time to develop some of this data that we've talked about. And it needs to be, you need, this meeting, it feels like this meeting needs to happen close to where we actually are into the chapter.
Okay.
So, rather than having it, you know, in the next month or so and then not getting into the chapter until December, it seems like this meeting might be more useful to have prior to getting into the, you know, closer to the time when we get into the specifics of the chapter. So, it sounds like you want to have an additional work session to talk about these policy issues in more depth and you want to do that prior to getting into the redline version of the chapter.
Well, yeah, and later's better, I think, because, again, with the theme, I'd, I'd like to have more of a data-driven discussion. And so, you know, I, the sorts of things I was outlining at least, and you'll, you'll do your own list, but, you know, really identifying with the components of, of, you know, the price of different sorts of housing forms, how much it's affected by the city permitting process, how much is affected by underlying lot supply, what we can do about it, what we can't do about it, how we can get to policies that support that. That requires some information that I hope you already have and just haven't compiled, but maybe not. So, I'd like to have the conversation with the data ahead of time so that we can really grind through stuff and have some informed conversations. I think the public would want that too. So, I'd, I'd go later.
Sounds like, I mean, it sounds like we could do that on parallel paths. If, if you guys are working on, you'd obviously have to compile some of that data to work on redline changes, you know, to the comp plan. So, it sounds like when we have a full group, we should, we should talk about whether we want to schedule another work session prior to having all those changes, you know, in front of us. And that might be worth, might be worth doing.
It sounds like a good idea to us. So, we'll just, we'll just plan on having that work session when we get closer to the time when we'll be looking at the chapter itself. I don't think we need direction from the full group. It sounds like a good idea to us.
Yeah.
It's obviously a good idea to you, so we'll just plan on that.
Great, okay. Anything else? All right. Greg, staff?
No, I went through the upcoming meetings. So, I think that's all that we had.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. We'll close the, close the meeting. Thank you.